This is our first Monday workshop meeting. As you can see, the tables are situated for each head of departments. You can sit at either table. If you have any questions that the guards can... The major departments in the borough will welcome to sit separately or sit at those tables in the quiet. I want to remind everyone here tonight that there is a code of conduct that we expect each of you, each of us, to respect, respectively, of the objective here tonight. There's been a lot of going back and forth interruptions. We'd like to just refrain from that so that we can get back to this of the borough. In addition to that, I want to welcome you to this event tonight because it is an event. This is relatively new. Historically, we used to have workshops back in 2000 when you would come on a workshop evening night and you would do exactly the thing we do here tonight. And then on the third Thursday, which is the West State Session, where there's a voting. As you know, in this meeting, there is no voting. The purpose of this meeting tonight is for you to hear what each department head has thought the past thirty days and maybe plans to do in the future. And so, but they will be called up. They will be given, provided this microphone to give their reports at their respective tables. Mr. Dawson will facilitate that. Councilor Johnson, can you add something?
Good evening, everyone. This is something that we try and hopefully you'll be taking all residents from the age with any directors, best leaders, the mayor, our candidates, anyone that's here, ask your questions, give some input. We don't know everything. We need to hear from you. This way, you can make your way around to each table. Let's try this out, see if it works. If it doesn't, we'll have to start working on trying to do something new. But let's try to give it a chance. Thank you.
First of all, the residents of my place, our festival is scheduled next month.
This is a flag company in nineteen sixty-four. And you could follow or wish to change. One nation under God, indivisible, would be revealed to another world.
Roll call, Mr. Johnson. Councilor, first, Karen Harris.
President. Mayor Peck.
President.
Thank you. Councilor Louis Johnson.
President.
Councilor George. Councilor John Ward. Councilor B. Councilor Wilton. Councilor Mantra. Councilor Mantra. Russell Wilson. Thank you. Project Corret. And our financial director, Senator.
President.
Thank you.
Under this, Mr. Dawson, I think you can use the microphone.
Ladies and gentlemen, since now we have no more visitors, now the president would be in full.
I would like for all the residents and the directors to take a look at the banners that hopefully will be showing up in the borough very soon. We would like to get your input with what you'd like to say. We have three locations. We have our engagement centers where we welcome banners from those areas. We have our business district and the business district banners will go there. And the rest of the borough, through our long days, the old bars, the river, the lifeboat, the annivins, of all of the major colleges. Please take a look at these little tables on my left over this side. And, um... So we can give you the courtesy. We're also looking for messages to put on the bottom of these. If anybody has anything that they would like to be included, please let me know. We're trying to bring this community together with things that say thoughtfulness, sharing, diversity, caring, helping one another. If you have any words you want to add with the year, please let me know. Um, and I guess that's about it. They'll be up front and you can go around and you can take a look at them. Thank you.
Mayor Porter.
Good evening. A couple of things to report. Had our quarterly mayor's forum this past Thursday, March 3rd. Had about sixty in attendance, physically and about sixty more online. We had raffles, giveaways, had a good time through with the residents. And conducted issues of public safety and the like. We had two special guests, District Attorney Jack Swolzleimer addressed the residents as well as State Senator Anthony Martin Williams was also in attendance. So it was helpful for the residents to hear from our elected officials. And they posed questions and concerns to those representatives. So it's great that they're able to come and address our residents. A matter of crime, I just want to point out like that three carjackings so far this year through the borough. All last year, we had six. Year before that, we had four. Year before that, we had one. So already we're way ahead of last year's pace. So I hope that this can continue with that three carjackings so far this year. Also, March 1st, the seven eleven was robbed at gunpoint. And they got away with a lot of damage. So I hope that, again, we can have enough officers to try to mitigate the crime that is occurring in our borough. We are going to, right now, also, all around the country, we... There's a shortage of police officers. They're resigning, they're retiring because it's not a good environment for police officers. So it's going to be difficult to get these officers. Right now, we need part-timers. We'd like, we need not one part-timer. We'd like to have at least a dozen to plenty. And then understand part-timers can't just work on the drop of the hat. You might ask the first sixth and they have other jobs and can't work the shifts. Then we go to the seventh and make it to the twelfth. So if that's how part-timers work, they just don't, they're just not available, right? All of them, right off the bat. Right now, we only have three in the pool. So we're going to request that we hire three part-timers. And we'd like to have more, but we can't get police officers. So we also have to keep that in mind when we make decisions, that it's not an environment... Philadelphia, New York, all police departments are really, really scurrying to get police officers because it's not, it's not attractive in this post, post George Floyd environment. So I want to report on that and also keep that in mind when our decision making. Police officers are at a premium and there are not a lot of candidates that want that job. Right now, we have five full-time officers down. And my hope, I did talk to the borough manager, Isaac Zoxton. I do appreciate his input on that and trying to get us up a snub with the Civil Service Commission office. And only the Civil Service Commission, under the Civil Service rules, can oversee the hiring of full-time police officers. Not the same case in part-timers. Council can't do it in part-times. But for full-time officers must go through the Civil Service procedure in the Civil Service Commission. That is all I have to report right now. Thank you.
Next question.
Sir.
The carjack. What time do you hear about it?
Usually at night. The last one was, I believe, February twenty-seventh. It was at night and it was a male victim. And at gunpoint, they're a carjack and that's very traumatic. My car was stolen and you feel violated when your car's stolen and you don't know what you did. But I can't imagine somebody holding a gun to me and saying, "Get out." That's, that's very, very, very severe.
You said one was at night, at some time?
Yeah, eight o'clock. The last one was, I believe, it was, I'm pretty sure it was February twenty-seventh. It was eight o'clock.
Do you remember the time?
I don't have the time. Do you remember the time I've been with it, the middle of the night? Middle of the night. Yeah, they usually prefer, not always, they usually prefer that.
Okay. And we had, did we have about nine to ten part-timers?
We had a lot of part-timers and the problem with part-timers is that a lot of them don't want to work. We found that they don't want to work as part of the optic where they're finding other jobs. They're having second thoughts. Three areas in the service industry, teachers are leaving droves. Law enforcement officers are leaving droves. Health care workers are leaving droves. So those three industries are finding it very hard to fill positions. And that's another reason why when we make decisions, we have to really thoughtful about that because besides everything else, they're hard to get in this environment.
Um, this was another question. When we were here at the community, I noticed, I went to speak to an officer and I noticed he didn't have a name tag. And he said that he had been here for nine months and had never gotten a name tag. Is that a problem that we have?
I don't know if it's a problem or working to that record like that.
And also, do you have a mark or not?
I believe the people are, I did talk to the borough manager about that to make sure that we have a kind of a naming convention. But we checked and the others are, that they do have numbers.
You said they do have...
I felt the check. But we'll, we'll look into that and make sure it's possible.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the mayor? All right, thank you.
With regards to the presidential meeting, as many of you, most of you are aware of, we do not have a celebration of Black History Month due to all of the other activities that go on.
What other activities?
Excuse me. So we are working on the quarterly newsletter that will go out. We're looking to recognize persons in our community that have contributed through the years. For example, we have applauded the fact that we have the Muslim Club, the oldest and first. uh, and first African-American swim club in the United States. But we never talk about their, the families that still live in this borough. Uh, we're not celebrating them nor other local persons who have served our community. So for the newsletter that is going to be, that's been worked on, we will have, uh, articles recognizing the speaking airline that lived in this community, uh, the liberal league participants that have lived in this community, as well as the Pierport family, some of the family, uh, families for the NOS one club. Uh, in addition to that, we will be, uh, looking very carefully at advertising, uh, for as the mayor has mentioned, the need for part timers, uh, and or full-time officers as well, that represent more of a diversity and more of a diverse, uh, police force. So that will be, that is forthcoming. The details are not worked out at this moment, but they will be worked out and working with our, with our, with our lieutenant. Excuse me, you're being rude.
Yes, we're being rude.
You're being rude and you'll be asked to, can I interrupt? You'll be asked to, you will be asked, you will be asked to put that story in front of you.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, what? Mr. Mayor, what? Yeah, say your name. This is the only time.
Um, next on our, on our agenda is the manager's report, Mr. Bell.
You didn't have a money bag?
Good evening, uh, residents, and thank you for coming out this evening. I want to report, uh, to Borough Manager, I attended a meeting with representatives of the William Penn School District to discuss their, A, master plan for the next ten years. And I have to tell you, the residents are yay, and you haven't seen any improvements at Curran Field or Evans or any other schools, and the Williams and William Penn School District is going to be pleasantly surprised. Over the next ten years, I'm not just feeling thunder, they are going to be coming to Borough Hall, we will have workshops and we'll explain that the things that will be taking place throughout the district, and I can only tell you to look forward to 125 million dollars in improvement throughout the William Penn School District. They also have plans, they are mentioning secondary school, uh, emergency, spending for the next two years, that's mainly air conditioning and heating systems that took schools to regular day. And they also have a master curriculum plan and engaging our community in that discussion. So also I completed a walk through the former Gaye's swimming club of Mr. Bill, Bill Senior, who is a longtime resident of Gaye's, and Mr. Troy C. Better, who is an architect at Keller Milo Architects, the purpose being, uh, the location for the new Gaye's Recreation Complex. Um, the proposal for a feasibility study has been requested from my instructor and I'm waiting for that feasibility proposal, not the feasibility study, but the feasibility proposal on my desk at any moment. Also, a meeting was held with our Gaye's children, it's incorporated, and definitely concerned current contract, which will expire in the year. We also discussed the quality of their work, which by all standards are excellent, and the current projects and completion dates. Um, the Borough Manager did in the process of completing an audit of all, uh, Borough property, including Gaye's Borough Own Planet, uh, electronic equipment, telephones, computers, and print. When completed, this information will be able to find a detailed review. A meeting was held on February 10th, 2022, with members of the Live Run Board, in attendance with Mrs. Laws, who is the president, Mrs. Wells, Vice President, and Mrs. McCabe, the correct, to discuss the improvements to the Live Run's infrastructure, manor doors and rear window. Currently reviewing two proposals with Public Works and a third company to be considered. That's completed, uh, site visit for a new rain yard located at Church and Gunther Avenue. Uh, Public Works, under direction of, uh, Mr. Jeffrey Brooks, will start this hopefully and eventually completed by April or May of 2022. Thus stands my report.
Are you going to ask our money back, Mr. Stone?
Um, solicitor's report, please.
I guess that's, uh...
Thank you, sir. Uh, very, very briefly, uh, good, good news to report from the solicitor's office. We were successful, the borough was successful in our appeal to Judge Kelly, um, as far as the redistricting goes. Uh, we asked that the William Penn School District remain and insurance matters remain with Judge Keith Williams here in Gaye's. He supported, uh, these Lansdowne Borough being moved its entirety, uh, to a different district court, to Judge Madison, Madison's district court. Uh, so that proposal was accepted. Uh, Judge Kelly did, um, keep William Penn here in, here with Keith Williams, so we were happy to have it through for him.
Mr. Mayor, do you have any further thoughts on today?
I have a question for the solicitor.
Let's go.
I don't need that. I don't need that. So with respect to the recent, um, civil action we received today against the borough and suburb council and the municipality and also Evans, I was bad affect the community at this point in time.
So, Mr. Bush had just, uh, said, you know, we have not yet, our office has not yet received that complaint. So, so our office has not received that complaint. Um, so you're right, then you're not, it doesn't surprise me that you're over.
I'm very excited. What's going on? I'm very excited.
As Mr. Bush had said, as Mr. Bush had said in his email, uh, that as soon as the civil lawsuit arrives on our desk, we will forward it to Mr. Doxson to forward to the insurance carrier. The insurance carrier is the first one that makes the decision as to legal representation for the borough. The borough will have some say in that, but the first step in that process is with the insurance carrier to receive the complaint and to, to do their business.
Question. So knowing that there is a complaint that has absolutely been filed, would it be, and solicitors, um, well, would it be considered diligence that you know and also does not have anything felt like the pulling over the document to get the file, instead of waiting?
Oh, no, the, the, the first step is still going to be with the, the insurance carrier. We, we know.
Well, I'm saying that, but I'm saying that as a solicitor, if I represented someone, the first thing I would do if it came to my ears that a lawsuit was filed, I would absolutely be pulling off the document to see what's going on. If it was all in the same joint something.
We, we know, we know the plaintiffs, we, we know our arguments, we've been prepared for this.
No, 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 that's another question. The question is why are we not doing our due diligence to get a copy of this complaint and send it to the insurance company?
I believe this being done.
That's not what you said. That's not what you're waiting for. That's what you said.
I don't, I don't.
You don't understand the question.
I don't.
I think you did that by the wrong.
That is entable, which I asked before, is, is what's happening?
What's happening?
If the lawsuit was filed today, we'll, we'll have that documentation, it will be given to the insurance carrier.
No, 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 that's not what you're saying. We know the problem. What you're saying is you were not, the borough and none of the defendants were formally served at this point in time, as of yet. They were not formally served. So what I ask is, since there has absolutely been a lawsuit that has been filed in the East, Eastern District of Pennsylvania, it is on the document, would, would it not be true for your firm to pull it off the document and send it immediately to the insurance company instead of waiting for it to be delivered, of all the chain or processing, and you not were... That's it. You're not asking without proof, you see? So you're not, you're not saying that, yeah, that would make it more centralizing.
I don't know. So, so whether, whether it's pulled down today, yesterday, tomorrow.
So you want to wait until they're actually served?
The, 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 the,
What do you think, council members, at the public? My report for March twenty twenty-two. There are a number of grants. Well, first of all, we did send to the borough to ask Jeff a proposal to do an evaluation of this building, structural, building envelope, and anything that we have to do with plumbing. So the borough council wants to proceed with that. That will be under approval agenda for next week. I met with Rufus in person, and we had phone conversations about several code issues that he want to help with. This morning, I attended a meeting with the Philadelphia water department and their engineer, J M T, about a stream bank erosion and a severe sanitary sewer issue along Couch Creek and Mount Rye, Mount Rye and Centauri. And they're working on that stream bank stabilization. It'll be a project coming out sometime this spring. We're on notice, obviously, because it does touch the borough, and we may have to. I just got the information from them late today. I think there will be an approval that will be canceled approval that also eventually means for them to adjust the floodline here. The floodline adjustment will be a positive adjustment to the borough. And this is all being done with the water department funds, no funds from the borough. We also will have another resolution next week for the Act five thirty-seven resolution. They've been asking all municipalities to adopt those resolutions. This has to do with the deep tunnel project that's going to go basically from Darby down to Mark Sopitz, a four hundred and fifty million dollar project. It's massive. And I've known a number of calls representing both the A and other municipalities about this project. The next item on my agenda is the grants. You do have a grant that the borough was awarded last spring for the sanitary sewer relocation on Playford Street from Longhanger and Bailey. Jeff and I were going to take a look at that this week. There was a C D application that was filed for calendar year twenty twenty-two for the Duff Avenue sinkhole, and those words will not be announced by the county until the spring of twenty twenty-two. That is yet to be announced. The borough received another grant for a small watering sewer work and a couple of feet before the seven minutes of late. Most paperwork came in. Just recently, the borough was awarded a nine hundred and fifty-five thousand dollar place for West Pop Street Parkway, infrastructure improvements. They were announced just last month, just before this week, last month. And there's another joint community project that's called the Flannel Community Park Conservation Landscaping and Industrial Access Project. That's a joint project with another municipality in this end of the county. Don't know much about that, but just again, that's been announced recently. There is a, what they call local shares account grant. That's some money that's from the casinos. Different parts of the state are giving these grants in different ways. Delaware County is looking at it from its community. I know that Mr. Dodson has been in touch with it. He spoke with our grants coordinator at our office, and then the boroughs want to submit on that grant. You can request a million dollars. This would be for the recreation center. And then we'll apply a council resolution next week, because those grants are due on the fifteenth. And then lastly, another grant is about two grants that are coming, D C N R. They're due on April sixth. And I've listed the type of projects that you can look at, rail studies, park improvements, those type of things, and D C E D, which is due May thirty-first. And the type of projects there are stormwater improvements, flood mitigation, greenways, and trails. I heard Mr. Nichols, I mean, Mr. Dodson recorded earlier on the rain garden. And when I meet with Jeff when I went to work, I looked at rain garden also. And we have gotten a number of plans from the borough, all paper copies of plans. We're going to be filing them into electronic file format. I talked to Isaac about this also. It's called G I S. And that'll be a much better way for public officials within the borough to access documents. Our office will be able to share things, even membership council, wherever you want to do that. But once they're filed electronically, then they're more easily shared with everyone in the borough at the borough's discretion. I think the rest of the items on the second page have to do with various sanitary sewer, storm sewer issues that both Jeff and myself have taken a look at over the last month and a half. And then lastly, the traffic signals we did need with Penn Dot. We had to do a pole slot at Lansdowne and Bailey. That's got the MacArthur Court project. And there was a traffic signal that needed to be moved there, so we met with Penn Dot to get that taken care of. And then very last thing, there were to be some improvements at McGave Boulevard and Church Lane. And a proposal, that work was underway before we became the borough engineer. The borough has in its possession a proposal from Traffic Planning and Design, T P D. I think it's somewhere in the order, ninety to twenty thousand dollars. And again, if that is going to be, if the borough wants to afford that, it will have to approve that grant from that resolution or that approval for T P D to do that work next week. That's the end of my report. No questions?
May I ask a question?
Sure.
Church Lane and Whitby Avenue. It's a real dangerous intersection. People can barely cross the street. Can you speak with them about possibly putting a stop sign or something like what they have in Lansdowne, Lansdowne Avenue, the lights that flip?
Flashlight, flashlight.
Or pedestrians?
I heard you say church lane. I didn't hear the other intersection.
Whitby Avenue.
Wait.
And possibly it's a little further. It's not Conny. I can't think of much street. Gunther Avenue. Thank you so much. Gunther Avenue.
It'd be.
Yeah, we need something done. Thank you.
I have a question. Can you, as our engineer, speak to the issue of crosswalks? Want to stay caught?
Well, crosswalks are, they have to be approved by Penn Dot. Very rarely will they install. They usually are at the discretion of the municipality, but they always have to be approved by Penn Dot at the borough's state level. Now, if Penn Dot is doing an improvement project, they may agree with what they made. In fact, I'm doing a number of crosswalks in another municipality, you know, again, half the municipalities. They actually got a grant they care for. But we had to get approved from Penn Dot in terms of size, location, and they usually also come with A D A requirements. For A D A ramps, that would take place in the public where you approach. But sure, they could be done. We can talk with Penn Dot at any intersection you're interested.
My second question, my second question relates to the G I S and the sonar application of it, and the importance of it to our underground freshwater lines and our sewer lines in terms of preempted conditions causing the borough lots of money. Can you speak to that aspect of G I S?
Yeah. Well, the first thing to do is to, again, the borough has it. All the plans in the borough are paper. So they don't have, they don't have intelligence, right? So when you put the plans into a G I S format, they become, they start to become intelligent. And then you can start to backfeed information. Now, again, Jeff and I have been talking to a company named Dukes, because there are, it's an old system in the borough, right? And we've been talking to Dukes about breaking the system, the borough into four quadrants, looking each other. If we gather that intelligence, then that, everything that we gather, and I spoke to you last week about this, if you could think of each of these plans, you've got a thorough map of just the streets. You've got the, you've got the traffic signals. You've got ear zoning. You've got sanitary sewers. You've got storm sewers. Think of all of those as pieces of, you know, your picture table layers of cell phone. And each one of those layers of cell phone went to G I S, and then they communicate with each other. So you start to talk about where's your storm relation to sanitary sewer, where are those in relation to your water lines? And they can give intelligence and most of the information rather than just pieces of paper that don't really mean anything. So that's one. If we do that with all of our municipalities, sort of way to do it in today's world with, you know, with the internet, and then it can only share. And the county has, Delaware County has a G I S system incorporated into, so like, all the parts within the borough property ownership, all of that we extract from the county's address.
I have a question, Mr. Nicklaus. Ah.
Hello.
Question. So I see here in your report, you're going to be submitting a local shares account grant for the recreation center.
Right.
Okay. Well, the problem with that is when we first heard about this grant, unfortunately, administration wasn't able to give us much information. They didn't know anything about it. Do you know anything about it? Is this a matching grant?
It is not a matching grant. These grants, and again, they're up to a million dollars. They came out from the state very, very late. They surprised, all municipalities that we work for were surprised by the, you know, by the grant. Then we had to do some research as to, because in certain counties within the state, counties are handling the applications. And they're sort of, but in Delaware County, they've allowed all of the municipalities individually to do them. But they were only announced like in late January, so very little information about, other than this money to keep them in casinos and so on.
Okay. Well, so it's not a matching grant, so that's great. So another question is with respect to the proposed rec center. I mean, is there a plan in place? Is there some kind of, you know, something written down that we can actually take a look at? I mean, how we going to sustain it? Where are the other monies coming from? There are so many questions about this recreation center that we don't have any answers to. So are we just like, kind of like, willy-nilly, just trying to get money, and then you want to put all the money in the basket, and then one day you gonna have enough to build a rec center house? I mean, is there a plan?
You heard Mr. Dodson say earlier that he's waiting for a proposal to come from Kelly Maile, who's an architect in Philadelphia, to do a feasibility study for the grant. But to answer your question, no, there is no plan, and we're submitting a grant application because we know that, we know that the monies are available. And without, you know, we don't really have a lot of information, but I don't think really anybody has a lot of information in other municipalities, because they came out just way too late.
But we should have something. We should at least have a plan.
Right. And I don't. And I sit there.
So I feel like we're just kind of weeding it as we go along, you know? There's a plan?
Yeah, I mean, I, you know.
We don't even know if the potential sites, swim pool property or a movie property. I mean, we need traffic studies. We need so much.
Well, all of those, not to mention traffic study will come later, for sure. But I can't , I mean, the more information I have, the better we make. But if we don't have information, but voluntarily, and other municipalities don't either, and will the borough be successful? I don't know. If the borough is successful, getting a million dollars, it can.
But it doesn't matter if you get the money and you don't have a plan.
Right. But I'd say the borough can choose not to accept it if you're.
But again, like I said, we still need a plan. So we don't have a plan. So we are kind of just, so I have another question here.
Look, excuse me.
I have a question.
Excuse me. Excuse me. Excuse me.
I'm still here.
I'm going to, I'm going to. Yeah, I'm going to make a comment with regards to the engineer. The engineer is new to this borough, but he comes with, but he comes to, but he comes with an incredible amount of experience. And it's a, it's kind of a, it's kind of a begging question. How would you, how would you build a rec center without a plan? That's kind of a redundant question. This gentleman, this gentleman, this gentleman has all of the necessary experience to recommend to this town, to recommend to this body. Either, either, you can't build a rec center without money. That's number one. That's number one. So the, so the plans that will follow, the plans will follow, we will not ignore the opportunity.
Ask the president, I have a question.
Excuse me.
Ask the president, I have a question. What if the rec center, if they do this feasibility study, and they discover that the rec center will cost five million dollars, eight million dollars? So, I'm asking, I'm asking, ask the president. So if, so my point is, if there is no idea how much the recreation center will cost us until we get the information, why are we just, because it's a legitimate question, why are we requesting a million dollars from here? We need to know how much it's going to cost and how is, and how is it going to be sustained. That's the way we input. That's the way we plan. You don't do it backwards.
Well, you certainly, you certainly can't do much planning when you don't have any money.
Right.
Really? You can't do much planning without any money. So, so.
So you answered the question. What is the feasibility study supposed to sound? Tell us.
Can you give them the one, two, three?
Well, there's no question, there's no question that no one knows what it will cost right now. And until you know the size of it, until you know the size of it, you won't know what the operating, until you know the size of it, you won't know the operating expenses. So I agree with all that. The question on the table, though, is, does the borough want to apply for this million dollars? Because there's no, there's no strings. I don't say there's no strings. There's no requirement to accept the money if in fact you don't proceed with the project. Now, I think, I can tell you from my experience, you're going to need more than a million dollars. So you're going to have to, but there are other grant opportunities, too.
How much is the feasibility? Who's able to provide an answer with respect to how much the feasibility study?
I think, Mr., I don't want to speak for Mr., I think he said he's waiting for that proposal.
Oh, he's waiting for that. Okay. So my next question for you, Mr. Engineer. Church and Chester Avenue. There was a project actually started in that area to assist some residents around there.
Right.
I'm sorry, Church and McDee. Church and McDee, right. So where are we with that project?
That was what I, if you go to the bottom of my second page, that was the, that was the proposal. So Traffic Planning and Design was working with Penn Dot on that project. They have what they call an all-hall contract with Penn Dot. And then that project came up. And so they sent a proposal to the borough at the very end. Well, they never sent it at the end of last year. When I came over in January, I talked with Traffic Planning. They called me up. I know that firm very well. They asked, they rescinded their proposal, which they did. So that proposal is, it needs to be approved. If the borough is to proceed with that project, it needs to be approved at the March meeting.
Okay. Are the residents who are directly impacted with respect to this whole project over there, are they being briefed with respect to each step that is happening? Are they being kept informed?
Yeah. But once, what will happen is, once the proposal is accepted by the borough, then there will need to be a meeting with residents, so that Traffic Planning can explain exactly what will be going on there. Because there is some major, there is some major change there in that, in that intersection. All for the improvements that the residents want.
One more question. So when you apply, and thank you so much for applying for these grants, are we being charged separately for applications and grants?
We have a, we have a grants coordinator in our office, and that's what she does. And so when we, when we do, when we do grant applications, then there's an hour to charge.
Oh, there's an hour to charge. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCusson. Next is the, the committee reports, financial reports, Mr. Nichols.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The engineer and the manager stole my thunder with all of the grant announcements. But for council's consideration, at this next meeting, there will be an A P list, a cash balance report, and also a proposed resolution to sell off the link point twenty twenty-one real estate taxes. This is a resolution that's presented every year for council to consider. This year, we're anticipating a windfall of three hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars that will go into the general fund once if this resolution is approved. We've been invited to reapply for the D C D twenty-five thousand dollars planning grant that we applied for last year to look at the economic development plan. And also, I am happy to announce that our fee of reimbursement in the amount of one hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars.
Yeah, I think, when we get the A P list to review, I feel like we're going to be with the rest of the documents. We usually deal with pretty non-communities.
So we're, you know, we changed the structure of the meeting. A lot of the bills come in after the first one in the month. So it wouldn't be a complete list, but we're trying to figure out how we can get it to you quicker and faster based upon when bills come in. Otherwise, we'll have two or three supplemental reports related to the A P list.
So what about the A P list?
So right now, we're hoping to have everything to council by this Friday.
You want to email that to them?
Yes.
Yeah, same way as we did as a, it's really a race. Because we should be able to say that. The point was to move the meeting so we would have time to communicate then. So.
And again. Yeah, I get that. But again, most of our bills come in toward the ten, between the ten and fifteen for the month, so.
Can I just request that you include invoices when you send the A P list as well?
Include you?
Yes.
Okay.
Community affairs.
She's. Actually, I have a question for community affairs.
We'll be able to answer it for you.
Well, yeah, I'm sure you will, because you're involved. So, community affairs. What is this? Is this part of community affairs? Is this part of community affairs? That's all I need to know. Is it part of community affairs? Not only is this just outright ridiculous, but it is so juvenile. And I, I can't say that I'm surprised, given the actors who did this. Okay. So what you actually did by printing this nonsense with tax dollars, you had nothing there with a tenant claim, and now an active lawsuit that has been filed. You actually dug a hole even deeper for the community. That's what you did. In addition to more claims being made against you for defamation. How dare you sit here, talk about unity, diversity, and you're pricking trash like this out, and then you have a council, this is supposed to be a full council, with only four members? You're an embarrassment as a leader. But this is community affairs. You're an embarrassment. You're going to lead a political propaganda, but this is slam political propaganda, and you use the tax dollars to do it. And you're wrong. Now, when a community takes a tax, tax, it's because of their poor leadership sitting at that table right there. That's what, that's the cause of it. And you're talking now, like this three months, we want to celebrate, give me a break. It's separation right there between all flags. And you're talking, oh, we want to celebrate. Give me a break.
Good evening, residents and council. The zoning and code enforcement report for February twenty twenty-two. The zoning used application five seventeen, five seventeen Church Lane. It was an application submitted to have a funeral home. This is being reviewed by the zoning. There was no zoning here in applications for the length of February. We have multiple hotspots, and there are parking court apartments, and a daily court yard shopping center near General Dollar. We have action items. Parking court apartment, there's trans issues throughout the complex, violations and citations for issue. The court cases are pending for this month, this month. Inspector Campbell is checking the C V S pharmacy for debris and pliness. I am working with the solicitor, zoning solicitor, and Councilor Brooks in reference to updating the ordinances, also with Councilor Lou Cloud from last year. Borough engineer has been assisting with the surveys of several locations, as he spoke earlier. Code officers are working on the signage issues at the businesses throughout the borough. The code cars are being lettered and will be finalized in the next two weeks. I left a message with the planning commission to assist the borough with reviewing the zone ordinances and ordinance. They returned the call and said they will be meeting with the borough to see what the borough has in mind and what their plan. There was two fire related, there was one fire last month, which was three seventeen Bailey Road. And we have one fire related renovations, and that's on Duncan Avenue and ten hundred block. We have a close item. The zoning appeal hearing decision was finalized. Decision was sent to the management, the borough solicitor. The zoning solicitor, Mr. John I. Nelson, is in contact with the owner of, his legal counsel of the restored building. Upcoming items. We will be scheduling a meeting with the zoning board to start reviewing the zone ordinances. And I will be meeting with the pavement companies that were contacted to see what they could do for the borough in reference to the driveway repairs. Another important issue was brought up in reference to, the borough needs to appoint an in-house planning commission. We have not had a planning commission in several years. The property maintenance, a major for the month, the department brought in three thousand four hundred eighty-nine dollars and eighty-nine cents. The code revenue for February was fifty-eight thousand three hundred and thirty-seven dollars. And after course, that completes the reporter to both departments. Any questions? Councilor Buck?
Uh, where are we with respect to the common driveway? Uh, where are we with respect to the common driveways?
That, that is, myself and the borough manager will be meeting with the pavement companies. I have spoke to about six of them. They will be coming in to give us the idea of what they can do for the borough. Uh, what they're looking into doing is probably doing a large area at one time, not just one property in that area. So they're going to give us a proposal of what they can do. I know last year, we did talk to the finance director in reference to money that was given to the borough in reference to how much, how much we cost or what we would do. We're still working on that problem.
We're still working on that problem?
Yes, we have not had anything back in reference to the amount of money from the council that holds of what they're going to be keeping use.
So, um, Mr. Nichols, so where are, like, do we agree or are we going to stand still? Respect to that or?
No, we, we are, um, my honest opinion is that the borough does it the one way where we hire a contractor if we cost us more money.
Right.
We could, and this is up to council at this point, to have a public meeting to determine whether we use our other funds. And if we had to be able to decide that we're going to grant homeowners a brand new exterior for rockets in their home, we most certainly can do that. But that is up to the government body.
Well, we need to prepare everyone after last night. I thought we left off and wanted, we had to meet again to come up with the actual criteria.
Yes, so, so last year, uh, Novemberish, we did have a meeting. Myself, Mr. Stokes, Councilor Road Cloud, um, there were some others, Ron Francis and some others. The regulations then changed. The final regulations from the federal government did come out January the eighth. They, they're the final ones. So at this point, we as a community need to hold a public meeting to discuss that proposal or any other proposal that council wants to consider. We do have a proposal that came from that committee that met back in Novemberish. Um, once council holds that public meeting and takes action as to say that this is, these are the steps that we want to take in to how we want to disperse those funds, then we can move forward. But we do need to say and talk about criteria if we're going to grant anything to nonprofits, businesses, or homes.
So, we, we're waiting for?
Uh, for, for me, uh, if we're going to establish criteria, I would want to do that with the solicitor and or, and the engineer. I would want to do that.
Well, the solicitor is here, I mean.
I'll be in touch. I'll be in touch with the solicitor and the engineer when we discuss it.
Okay, also, um, I have to leave, but thank you. Oh, but you know what, Mr. Nichols, um, please be sure to give me the invoices, everyone, invoices related to this. If and any, because I see we have Yaden Borough sale on here, Yaden Borough's address, so Yaden Borough must have paid for this. I would like to see the invoices attached to the AP list. Oh, and Mr. Nichols, Director Stokes, Director Stokes. Director Stokes, I have one more, um, question for you. Um, where are we with respect to the sidewalks? Springtime is coming, you know what, I walk through the borough.
That is correct. We are starting to issue the citations to our sidewalks that were not repaired last year. So that is in the process that we're going to put it up.
And what, how we go over task cards with, 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 uh, with certain homes that have trash all in their backyard though.
That is-
Because this is what I'm, that's what I'm gonna say. It is not good enough to just throw blue tarp over a pile of trash or a couple of piles of trash. Okay, that's still an odd story, that's number one. Number two, we talking about hanging up banners and got homes around here and feel like trash trucks. That's not acceptable, okay? So I just want to make sure that we're treating everyone clearly across the board.
All report of our latest technical two R department are handled by Inspector. Their arbitrage was driven and ready, written in reference to what the, the binding and defining and the decision and the outcome.
Okay, all right, I just want to make sure. I don't want no discrimination.
There's no discrimination in that goes forward.
We have a change in the agenda, um, Councilor. For recreation?
Councilor Johnson. Yeah, thank you. Um, we're always looking for things for our children to do. They do not have enough things to do in this community, and parents are always asking, what else can our children do? A while back, we had Denise Worthy come, um, and she does beautiful plays, uh, makes beautiful costumes for children. Um, she does some wonderful, wonderful things, and she's coming back. And I would just like for her to speak to you just for a moment to let you know what she's going to start doing for the children in our community.
Well, exactly, I sat here and I listened to what's going on in the room, and I really didn't feel like this was the time or the place to talk about kids. However, yes, yes, I understand, right? But I've been serving the community here for at least 25 years, a volunteer of my time to teach performing arts throughout the, the community. I'm a professional performing artist, have a degree in theater, and what we do is we allow children to come to our workshops. And in our workshops, we have, uh, five one C three, we are nonprofit. It's basically, we, we work on donations and, you know, fundraisers and things like that. Um, we take all ages, there's no auditions involved because we believe that we can allot the spirit of children, any child, any age. Uh, when I was younger, I used to go to my community, um, recreation center or, we always had something going on in the community, the children would do all kinds of things, you know, they dress you up. And we did time fun weddings, we did a passion show, it was just that kind of hands-on kind of thing. And that's how I began to learn how to dance, and somebody would put me in some kind of choir, and I learned how to sing, and, and then, you know, you learn how to play drums, and you learn how to play your instrument, sometimes through church. But we need that kind of community effort for our performing arts. So what I try to do is kind of, uh, introduce our children to performing arts. So, uh, yet again, I think they would have a love for the arts. And because our school system don't have the arts sometimes because of, you know, budget cuts and things like that. Not only that, I have found that our kids are not getting the performing arts on the level that they need to get the performing arts because the school budget cuts. Sometimes they'll have the home actor, be a theater person, or they have the music teacher, you know, trying to do drama, teach dance. And a lot of times, our kids trying to leave Pinewood High School or high school and go on to the performing arts, a lot of them cannot make it into their colleges because they're not prepared on a professional level. So we try to give them an, you know, a little enhancement of what it would be like to be in a full musical theater production. So that's what I do at all ages. So I've been doing it now for at least 25 years or more.
Yeah, I have a question. So when you propose the children are going to be performing and practicing?
Well, you, for the last, I'd say 21 years, we did it in school.
At what school?
We did that Pinewood, I, I performed at Pinewood, they go over to school and score. I have performed at the library already. I have done it, uh, done it here. Um, we, you know, all, uh, Bell Avenue, Evans, wherever I can find a spot, I'll usually grab the kids, and we do, after all, they're our kids, and they deserve, especially after coming off of COVID, they need a place where they can, uh, just express themselves. Our kids were locked up for two years, and they just need to express themselves, yes.
Yeah, we about to go through.
I understand.
Where nobody coming in, messing up.
Oh, I understand, I understand your situation. Been doing it for 21 years, and my company is pretty much, you know, together. So I'm here to heal the community in any way that I can. I live my skills, my voice, my son over here is a videographer. I have his professional drummer son, my husband plays guitar, bass, I can sing. So if anybody needed anything from me, just holler, we are here. On stage productions.
Thank you so much.
That's on stage productions, thank you.
See you later.
Thank you, thank you.
Ms. Worthy, thank you, Councilor Johnson. Next on the agenda is the ordinance and zoning. Oh, sorry, yep, yep. Public Works, Jeff.
Right. Are we doing it like good?
Jeff, Jeff.
Uh, just, uh, all right, so, uh, e-waste. Uh, we have an e-waste event, March 25th, uh, from 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. We are now getting back to the yard waste drop-off. That'll be the second Wednesday of each month. Um, here's some rules and regulations, yard waste is defined as the filing, twigs, uh, sticks, shrubbery, tree trimming, branches. Uh, branches can't be wider than four inches in diameter, and the bundles cannot be longer than three feet in length. Uh, legally accepted, but must be separated from all other, uh, materials. All contractors, landscapers, and, uh, individuals of that nature are prohibited from participating. Uh, everyone who comes, please stop in, see me first, um, and just bring proof of, you know, residency. That's all it is. Uh, we have one abatement that was on the corner of Rondale Avenue and McDay Boulevard. That was low hanging branches over the, over McDay Boulevard. It's been a, you know, long going thing. Guys, we went out there, we trimmed back all the low hanging limbs that were overhanging the public right away. Uh, street sweeper's back, uh, what was wrong with it? Debris was getting into the transmission, causing it to, you know, go falling.
I can hardly hear you. I can hardly hear you.
Okay. Um, so that was, uh, that was covered.
What were you saying about the, um, street sweeper?
The street sweeper, so it was broken, it was broken last month, there was a transmission issue. Debris was getting underneath it, so I took it to a shop, and the company actually covered it. I got it covered, it wasn't technically under what our insurance is on table, but I got it covered. Um, that would have been $3,000 out of the borough's pocket, but we were able to work. Um, shade trees, listed 2022 shade trees, that will be presented in the April meeting. During that, I'll, I'll get counselors, uh, an updated proposal from our tree contractor. I'll list the trees with photos, and I'll also provide key notes and information as well as the shade tree master list that I put together last year, documents, every single shade tree we do have in the borough. Um, as Isaac said, we met on March 1st, 2022, to talk about the Gunther Ave, um, parking lot, rain garden project, uh, the grant covers all parts of the projects. The only, uh, money that'll come out of the borough's pocket will be when we, during that taking time, I'd like to get all the concrete prepared. Uh, sanitary sewer lines, we had two backups, we had 764 Fern Street as well as Cottle. Uh, that was from West Cobb's going up towards Cottle. Uh, both were on the homeowners, uh, we found an excess of soap and grease. So what I'd like to do, you know, if you guys could, don't flush any grease, don't flush any soap. Toilet tissue, only, no wipes, uh, no feminine products, just keep, simple, keep the face clean. Um, yeah, that's all I got for you guys. Questions?
Um, I feel like before coming here, you have a, like, situation with the general, you think, uh, you need to, uh, someone edit this?
Um, I do not, but if you call me tomorrow, I'll get on the county's website, and I'll, I'll, I'll find out for you.
Okay, right.
Everybody else?
Actually, I just have a correction, not for you, but for recreation. So a parent just informed me from the Zoom here that, uh, William Penn School District absolutely has a, uh, drama program that's being headed up by Judy Jordan, and their plays are phenomenal. So William Penn School District absolutely has a program. They actually did Fame and, and, uh, and Heights, Red, Hamilton, they did some first order, you know, with this?
Here's what.
Pierce, all of that, so William Penn School District absolutely has a drama program.
Okay, and who are we having more? The more the better.
Nine one nine.
She's C three, she does not collect money.
All you want to do is bear money.
She's not collecting money.
Cut it out this time.
Five oh one C three.
Cut it out.
The public safety lieutenant.
Our first answer will be never time right now. Thanks for giving us.
Um, okay, so for a month of February, please respond to 553 calls for service. Uh, four criminal arrests, four summary arrests, 36 traffic citations, 279 parking tickets. Um, last week, we, uh, participated in Reading Spirit Week with the, uh, two third grade classes and the two fourth grade classes at M L one three, we read books and, um, other than that, that's pretty much all I have, right?
Yes, thank you. So, there?
I have one.
Yes, I'm sorry, one second. Uh, I'd also like to request the council, um, approve the hiring of three part-time officers. We have three officers that fly, we did background checks on, uh, psychologicals, medicals, and they passed all that stuff, um, so they're ready to be hired and start the training process. Yes?
Um, what do you want to fill in about, uh, residents that are parked on the street that commit parking only? They not make a payment?
Uh, we're, we are taking it, and if we're missing them, please give us a call, you know, always call 911.
I called off.
Okay.
And the label said, I put a bar around, I'm, I'm calling, I have a parking lot, and nobody comes. And people that don't have permit parking on the other street, they figured it out.
Which street do you, please?
Eight hundred block of Arbor Street.
Of Arbor, okay. Uh, well, it's big, take, uh, close attention, don't, don't there. Uh, but yeah, if you can, you can always call, or if you just want to email me directly, you can email me, and that way I make sure we're not missing it. I wish I did, I like that, my stuff, all right, no problem.
Um, I'm thinking about that, uh, first, our Marv Road, we did it until, I don't know, it was around the 45. I actually have a, uh, 100, he's in there, he's out of those, uh, I couldn't, where are they? He's in our Marv Street, he's in our Marv Street, what time do you call up?
Eight hundred.
Well, problem, can I?
I don't, I don't have the authority to issue a citation.
Yeah, so, last year, I believe, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm a little far, so I'm not going to be telling you. No, no, I'm, I'm only explaining my vote here with respect to the conversation. So the chief and I did have a conversation about the 800 block of Arbor Street, and I believe the chief did say, until he could look through the, uh, the ordinances to make sure that the proper signatures are up, and he can do some, uh, more, uh, investigation with respect to if he can legally do the permit parking.
It's up.
I understand that it's up, but subsequent to that, it came to light that it may not be up legally.
Okay, I need to address that. Okay, Laura, Arbor, and Queston, front Carol. Laura, Arbor, they had interviews, and the reason that we need permit parking is because the, um, residents, uh, were very thoughtful. Where, the, the, the house that had the problem, or the house that's closest to the farming street, the very first street was very thoughtful. And those tenants come on Laura, Arbor, and Queston, and need their cars for days. And we even had a situation where we, we watched them, it was a couple, both of them had cars, one would park their car there, and then the other one, who let the, the first one pull off, and then they would pull in the spot, and the first president, I mean, the first tenant would walk. And it's been going on for years, and we really saw the heart of that, the perp and taxes, and we're actually the representative of this borough, and for Laura to have it, and Arbor and Queston not have it, it doesn't make sense.
So I'll, well, thank you for that. So here's the thing. The way things have been done in the past, unfortunately, uh, they didn't seem to really look into the legal aspects of it. Okay, so- So, there are other residents on Arbor that actually had, they weren't for the permit parking. So, it came to light that everyone on the block did not petition for it, and you have to involve everyone.
Well, I can prove that, because I was on the residence in Austin.
There were other residents that actually called the police chief, the former chief, and made complaints, because they were actually residents of the block, and they received tickets.
Tickets for what?
For parking on the block. Because they didn't know that it was permit parking, and that's how wrong this was.
Well, this has to be on the court, you gotta go now.
Well, some residents are claiming that they didn't, but this is what I'm proposing. Now, let's look into the legalities, do it the right way. Everybody on that block has to be petitioned for their request. Everyone has to be on the same page.
Well, I don't know why anybody would ever.
We don't even have the ordinance.
Well, I don't know why anybody on that block would say, you know, I don't want permit parking. When you come home, you work overtime, you're paying taxes, and you can't park in front of your house for five days, and it's the same car. And then, being politely said, you talk to people as you take the car. You know, um, this is permit parking, I don't want you to park here. So, they might walk off, but then two others in are right there.
So, I get that, but what I'm suggesting is that we do it the right way, the proper way, because this is another issue that the same residents have brought up. If they have company come over that live in gay, that's.
Well, see, the ones that, the ones that are against it, they.
This is, well, see, this is the reason why I, if things like this come up, we should have a public forum to have the open discussion, to discuss the programs, to discuss the times.
Uh, excuse me. Uh, what's your name?
Rob Williams.
Oh, uh, what's your last name?
Lee.
Miss Lee, would you say to manager, uh, before you leave, give him your address?
I, I know, but he's one of the ones that voted against it.
Can I get your information?
I don't know. I'm not there, man. And they basically knew me all. I said, I, I said, Mr. Johnson, I said, you're one of the ones that voted against, um, permit parking with Arbor, because at the time, when he came out, two others got to none, not at all. They came out screaming to death, where it's fully a party because everybody needs that parking. And he reports back, oh, they don't need permit parking with Arbor, so no, I'm not talking about.
Let's change his name. But not only, uh, I believe, you also had the conversation. The solicitor should be included in that conversation to discuss the legalities of it. The police department also should be in that conversation.
But what's illegal about who?
His, his, his addition.
There's nothing illegal. There's nothing illegal.
All the stuff that's going on in the day, and you two wanna talk about it, they hear that.
Then you can talk. But we want to make sure we're mixed. Give me your information.
What?
We're going to. We'll follow up, we'll follow up with you, make sure that gets resolved.
And make sure they do.
Thank you, thank you.
But you know, also, the residents, the rest of the residents of here need to know exactly how this operating is.
Well, because if I live in gay, and, and I went to go see a friend on Arbor, hopefully you're a friend of mine, and I parked there, and I didn't get to see. But what I'm saying?
No, I'm just saying, I would.
I'm very sorry to explain that. Each person that has permit parking has two gas pads. So, if you know, if I know who has that parking, I'll say to them, let me give you a pass to put on your bag.
Sure.
So, these people that are against it, it's like the gentleman in the truck, you don't come out, no. These wanna come out, we have to walk.
Miss Lee, Miss Lee, we do have to, we do have to move the meeting. Just, uh, Miss Lee, just give him your phone number. Your phone number, Miss Lee, your phone number and address to Mr. Nichols.
What?
He'll, he will follow up, we'll follow up with you. We have to move on. We just need your information to follow up with you. We have to continue the meeting or adjourn the meeting. That is not. Well, that, that's exactly why we are closing this out, so we can get moving. Uh, Lieutenant, are you finished with the public safety report? Thank you, sir.
The fire department has to do a real management job.
Fire Department report.
I know, it's getting almost six, and then you can't go with the finance director.
I don't get paid that much.
I know.
Uh, good evening, everyone. My, uh, fire department report in the month of February. The fire department responded to 87 fire incidents and 231 medical incidents. Uh, as Ruth has said in his report, uh, we had a major fire on Valley Road. Fortunately, no one was injured that day. Uh, it was the equivalent of a two alarm fire. Uh, so, lots of surrounding fire companies assisted us that day, as well as the law enforcement fellows. Uh, so, um, our, our calls that we saw in February were quite aligned with what we normally see, lots of, uh, fire alarms, uh, other than that major incident on Valley Road. Uh, there was no other serious incidents in the month of February. Uh, we did just recently, in the last few days, put our new SCBA in, in service. Uh, it's been a project for about a year. It took about nine months for them to commit, uh, and they were purchased with grant money from FEMA, which was, uh, $185,000 of grant that the fire company got for ourselves.
Emergency management.
The emergency management report for February, there was no issues, no issues that were reported to emergency management. There is an upcoming training at the 911 Center that's responsible for all emergency management coordinators and elder accountants, with I will be in session, and the emergency management coordinator for Earl, Katie, to implement my report.
Uh, thank you, thank you. For recreation, Mr. Hunter, would you come up?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, I just passed out, uh, information on, uh, rain barrel workshop. Uh, we've been trying to reduce the, uh, sediment reduction and pollution reduction in your house. So, like a rain barrel workshop. And you're willing to come to that? Yeah, okay. So, we're gonna have the rain barrel workshop webinar. For gay, it's the 18th. And we'd like all gay residents who are interested to come out. We will distribute the rain barrels on the 19th, which is the next day. Now, to give the rain barrel, unless you go to the webinar. So, we'd like you to be involved in the webinar. We'll give the rain barrels out probably at the theater. I think we're gonna do that. Yes, sir. Theater line, right. So, that's one of the big things that's coming up. We also, if you haven't seen our new open-air recreation, uh, fitness court over at Community Park. I mean, people have been to Community Park a lot. Not many, you haven't seen this new open-air recreation fitness court. So, we've tried to add some new things to the park, uh, some updates. You know, our park is used quite a lot, uh, so we want to, and we did, add this new fitness center. Uh, if you go to the fitness center, and you send us some pictures of you working out, and it has to be a picture of you, can't be a picture of someone else. We know how that works. So, you'll get a T-shirt. You're gonna hold this T-shirt up. Got it? Good, you're gonna get a T-shirt. So, send me pictures of you working out on the fitness center, and I will get you a T-shirt, uh, from the National Fitness Court. So, it's a fantastic facility, uh, that we have over there. And also, the last thing we want to do is, and how many people have pets? I know some people have very large dogs. We walked out the street. On your way out, we have these doggy-doo, uh, items that you could put onto the leash of your, of your canine, or your cat, or whatever you want, or whoever you want. We have these to pass out. So, uh, you can grab some in front. If you know many other people who need them, you can give me a call at the Recreation Department.
Getting a bit, uh, getting a bit activities for the summer.
Yes, uh, recreational activities for the summer. We're trying, now that COVID is, uh, subsided to some extent, we wanna try to get back to the programs we've been running, uh, excuse me, for a long time, including Flag Day, and now we have Juneteenth. The school district has cleaned up the tennis courts at Kirk Field. So, it looks like we're gonna have tennis again. We have our summer camp, uh, at Camp Garrett out in Marple, and we'll be, uh, giving our kids an opportunity to do that. We also had the vegetable program this past summer, I think it was, where we had, uh, companies from Marlboro Newtown, who actually came in, and they gave away vegetables and seeds. So, we're gonna try to get that back. We had that right here for a hall. So, we're gonna try to continue with that this year, along with the Halloween program, the Veterans Program, and some other things. So, keep your after ears open, we'll let you know what's going on. Check the website, uh, gay teenagers and other things.
I have a question.
Yes.
Do we have any programs where children can actually get their hands dirty and sort of playing basketball?
Yes, we, uh, we do. We have a, we have a couple of programs. We've been approached by a number of residents to, uh, continue our program, uh, at the park, through the Love Garden, and also to, uh, some of the schools. We're gonna do some purification with, uh, the schools, with Bell and Heavens, uh, trying to get kids, kind of getting involved in science. We wanna use, we're trying to use science, agricultural science, as a way to get our kids involved in other things at the school. Uh, so, we're gonna, we're gonna present.
I have a question.
Yes.
Uh, uh, well, first name, Earl Manager, Latoya Councilor, I always wanted to know, so please mark her present for me. Latoya, I know.
Are you saying she's present?
One, the two.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, everyone.
Okay.
Uh, okay. Mr. Hunter, the Love Garden, the sign is missing. Will we be replacing the sign, or do we find a sign?
No, no, the sign, well, it should be. The sign, when I checked, was in between the rain barrels. So, the sign was all finished, but I think, and I'll check it tomorrow, was in between the rain barrels. Someone folded it up and put it in between the rain barrels. I. The sign is not up or finished.
But it will be put back up.
I assume, I'm, I'll check to see if it's still there. It was there, but last week, the sign was there. It was folded, and someone took it off the finish and put it in between the rain barrels.
So, what I'm asking is, will it be put back up?
I'll put it back up.
Oh, Mr. Hunter, we have a, a resident.
At the theater line. Yeah, at the theater line.
Get a rain barrel?
No.
Cool shake, okay. Which one is it on the building? It's with the sign. Yeah. Sure is.
Is that from that Trueheart? That's True, Robert Trueheart?
Thank you. I, I really, um, don't have any words to describe the level of inattitude that I've seen here tonight, but the only thing I wanna say is we've been talking about the beacon truth to power, so I wanna speak the truth of God that has the power that is above all. Romans 16, 17 to 18 says, "I appeal to you, brothers, to watch out for those who cause divisions and create obstacles contrary to the doctrine that you have been taught. Avoid them, for such persons do not serve our Lord Christ but their own attack. And by smooth talk and flattery, they deceive the hearts of the naive." 2 Corinthians 11, 13 to 15, "For such men are false apostles, deceitful workmen, disguising themselves as apostles of Christ. And no wonder, for even Satan describes himself as an angel of light. So, it is no surprise that his servants also disguise themselves as servants of righteousness. Their ends will correspond with their deeds." Titus 1:6, "Here's what you should look for in an elder for people who are going to be in charge. He should, or she should be above suspicion. If he is married, he should be the husband of one wife, raise children who believe, and be a person who can't be accused of rough and wrongest living. Another virgin says, 'His or her children must be believers who don't have a reputation for being wild or rebellious.'" And we've had a member of this council president whose son has been threatening openly resident and elected official. "It is necessary that any overseer you appoint be blameless, as he or she is entrusted with God's mission. Look for someone who isn't pompous or quick to anger, who is not a drunkard, violent, or chasing after seedy gain or worldly fame. Find a person who lovingly opens his or her home to others, who honors goodness, who is thoughtful, fair, devout, self-controlled, and who clings to the faithful word that is taught and put. He or she must be able not only to encourage people with sound teaching, but also to challenge those who are against it." You need to understand that the spirit of the living God, Jehovah, Adonai, Elohim, Yahweh, does not and is not lining up with the spirit that you have ushered onto this council, you and the two who didn't have the decency to remain, into this borough with the lies, the deceit, and very false witness against your brothers and sisters.
Deborah Fittman. Deborah Fittman.
Deborah Fittman, come on up here, Deborah. Deborah, she's the.
Deborah Fittman, Rebecca Fittman.
She has every talk of this one.
Um, good evening, good evening, everyone. Um, I have not been at a lot of meetings, but I have been hearing some of the things that have been going on. And I just have a free break to ask, to ask a couple questions, and then I would like to meet. Okay, I'm in my head, what's her name? Okay, I'm in the south, my daughter is her two weeks, and everything. So, I'm really appalled at a lot of the things that I'm seeing that happen in the community. Okay? So, my first question is, is, at the beginning of my meeting, I heard that we did not have a back pitch, um, program for the community because of the census. So, I just. So, I just want to know, number one, what do you think? Because we have attacked, we have bullied a predominantly African-American community, did not have any Black History Month, anything, okay? The last meeting that I attended at any church was not in that, okay? The last meeting that I attended was called the Community, was called the Red Lake Conference. So, here's the thing, and I want to roll over, who's going on with the Red Lake Conference? Some of them know why. And then, we're evil things that are going on in the community, okay? And I want to work with it with everything that's going on in the community. So, my question to you is, the purification of the schools, the government that comes to help, with the school heart and for all the others. I know my daughter's not sure if we're wrong, and I have a fight saying that the school has to be in that position. I just got it back with it, okay? So, actually, for all the things that you put through our community, and all the things that I'm working on that attack the community, that want to attack the community, how am I going to be able to afford? Even with all the things that attack the, in this little community, that I have to do a certain division of? So, what I'm saying to you is this, we need to clean up what's in this house today. And we probably need to make it better for the community. So, I need some answers, okay? So, please let us know why people wasn't there. Why did you not set that up on my table? Why, okay, did you have any Black History Month for Red Lake? And what are we going to do to sustain our community with all the nonsense and foolishness that's going on?
Could you give the mic to Mr. Trent? Mr. Trent? Also, yeah, yes, I'm going to answer.
What's that?
Uh, Mr. Trent. Okay.
Good evening, Mike Trent. Since I didn't know what to go on the agenda, first of all, who's this? I don't think he introduced himself. I know he's not Mr. Suron, he's not Mr. Much.
Mr. Bob.
I work with Mr. Much as Bob. No, what's his last name? Bob, B-O-G-E-S. Okay, is there an idea what the cost of a van is for a day?
Approximately, since we're able to do them ourselves through the Public Works Department, it'll be ninety, about $9,000, less than $4,000 for installation, less than that.
$9,000?
Follow me on the mic, Mr. Trent.
Is there a cost to this feasibility study?
No, sir. We're waiting for the proposal.
Why would you say we might be doing it soon?
Sir, sir, I'm waiting for the proposal. You better know I can give you a price for the other feasibility study.
Okay.
Thank you.
Every time I look at our borough website, it makes me, you know, it's like, this month we're going to have four committee meetings the same night, the same time. Like, whatever, last month it was three. And it's like, how can somebody that's interested in going to these different meetings attend if you have all at the same time?
They're going to be scattered.
Scattered. They always say six o'clock on three...
They'll schedule them at different times.
It's four.
But they're all scheduled at different times.
Are they going to change it on the website?
They will.
I hope so. When does the finals to the meeting? Because I don't see anything listed as far as finals. Is there a finals to any meeting?
It will be off to the holidays.
There'll be one, but Sharon and I will be together instead of by next meeting. Okay, good. I noticed that's not listed, that's all. Also, I noticed that it seems like the second Saturday is a month for at least the next six months. There's a meeting from 12 to 3. This is, you know, Dome Water and Gay. I didn't know what that was. That's something new.
I don't know what it says. I can't answer. I can't just...
You saw that on the website?
Yes, on the website. That's why I got it.
What does it say?
It says, "Counselor, Dome Water, Religious," it says, "and Gay." And I mean, it's like, if you're on the listening, you actually have it, you know, on my...
Okay.
Garrett, do you know where's... You put it up. Do you know what it is? Because you posted it, I guess.
Yeah, it's a food drive.
A food drive?
It's a food drive for the second Saturday of this month. So, if you just click on the link, it'll take you to more information. And you can actually read the limited information that I do here.
And that's why I said it's limited. I mean, you know, it doesn't really, I understand, I understand you just post, right, but it's...
So, here's the thing, here's the thing, though. If I don't put up anything that you hear about, that's a problem. If I put up something and it's not enough, that's a problem. So, basically, anything that's on the website seems to be a problem. But it's never scrutinized, net like criticism the way they're there. How do I know because...
Let them be. I mean, I don't know what that...
It's not me. And they are all ready to act their part.
I don't need discussing what we did here. I don't need to debate what I'm talking about here. You asked a question. What was your question, Mr. Trent?
I was wondering what was this event about?
It's a food drive. A food drive. And guess what, Mr. Trent? I don't know anything about a food drive. Do you know anything about food drive? It's the council of war. No one knows anything. They do what they want to do. That's how they bend you. Listen, you see this picture? This is how it's literally going down in this borough. It's a council of war. They don't even know when the finals are made. I mean, when does the finals start? They don't even have dates for finals.
All right, my last thing I want to mention is...
No, because they don't...
From what I've seen in the papers and here about other things, it seems like we're possibly going to be bankruptcy or in serious financial crisis. And I would suggest that in order to alleviate that, firstly, hire the chief back. Because then, hopefully, you can work it out where he'll like, you save some of his lawsuits or whatever, to save us money. But the main thing is, we'd like to have the chief back. Secondly, I'm not sure what's going on with this marijuana, but it sounds like, the dispensary, it sounds like they could possibly sue us for like $10,000. And it seems like they even mentioned something about one or two of the councillors saying some defamatory things about them, which might add additional money that they might sue for. So, I'm just suggesting, these are options. I mean, and really, in the long run, for the... Because it's really under your...
Angela Lee, Angela Lee, Ms. Lee? Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Is she still here? The microphone's...
This question has...
There you go.
And I've heard any questions answered, Ms. Goodman.
Ms. Goodman, I'd be glad, Ms. Goodman, I'd be glad to speak with you after the meeting.
I ask you any...
It's not going to be a question that you...
In regard to me, no longer being a representative here, I need that advice. I'll be attacked, okay, send these parents off officially. I'm not taking it over that... May I just say to you? I'm not, I asked a question. I think that things should be done decently. That's how I, that's how I do it. And this is open forum. And I asked a question in an open forum, and I do not disrespect you, but I make this...
Ma'am, I will not entertain, I will not entertain a question in this meeting. I will not.
Well, why do you allow us to... See, you never answer our...
Don't answer the question.
She don't have an answer. That's, that's... She don't have an answer. The felon, the felon is for, the felon is for. Good night. Are you leaving for the citizens' meeting? People, what? All right. Okay, okay, ma'am, that's why, that's why I had the objection to the citizens' forum. And then, because three of the councillors are going. And they don't think that's being respectful to a resident of Gay of over 45 years. And to the end question. Yeah. My concern is, how are the residents going to be kept informed about problems, crime areas? My citizen app pops all day long, because we live around this office, but I'm not getting the information to the mayor, Mr. Trent, about the car debt. And he said another problem, that was food. And so, that's a concern. What are we going to do to address the dysfunction that's affecting the morale of the community? And Mr. Trent spoke about the committee meetings. If they're all at six o'clock on the same day, are they going to be zoomed? Are they going to be Facebook? How are we going to get the information when it's physically impossible for us to go to those meetings if they're at the same time? Also, my other concern is, the thing with the police department around on my street is pretty bad. Nobody wants to come to these meetings because they don't feel that anything will get done. So, my request, as always, is to bring the state chief. No disrespect to the public, but at least the chief, I don't want to go on. I publish them. I like to get out and start walking so I can get off this pandemic fat, but I'm not going to be able to do that unless I know what's going on in the neighborhood. So, those are my concerns. Ray, back to chief. Change the public forum back to be there, because it's at this time of time.
That's why... Ms. Lee? Ms. Lee?
Sharon, the very first meeting this year was to replace the law firm that specializes in municipal law, employment law, and real estate law with a criminal defense law firm. Who hires a criminal defense law firm? Criminals. Rather than getting advice from Kiltany Law, advice that could have protected our borough from lawsuits, you plunge ahead with your personal agenda with a criminal defense lawyer at your back. You unjustly severed cheap parole employment for keeping the borough safe during a national emergency.
Extra hours, you're being so, the council of Red Johnson just disregarded this meeting, leaving us without a forum, which technically means meeting is over. That's how much consideration that the felon is for. And everybody else leaving earlier under that... The extra hours for hard time officers and the resulting settlement did not happen on board watch. You are not the judge, jury, and executioner for the previous council's decisions. We received much more in code relief funds than the settlement for overtime. We came out ahead, so stop knocking on people's doors, spreading your false narrative. You do not have the right to revoke zoning through the medical marijuana dispensary. It is a legal business. Your delusions of being above the law have real consequences. The multiple lawsuits you are causing will bankrupt the borough. Now, after decapitating the police department, you have poured concrete into coves of the code department by refusing to bring your yard up to code. Your open contempt for our borough's coves, not to mention your neighbors, means anyone who gets a citation or a fine can contest it. What kind of council president actively makes the jobs of borough employees horror? It's unconscionable, it's unacceptable, it's unethical. Quitting the charbroiler junk pile is not an acceptable solution. Are you listening?
You're three minutes in.
You have a... Your voting president, your voting president is not a real invisibility who would hire, leaning against your health. You are the one who holds the finger up high and pulls a fire. As the lovely, most business controlling our eight and a half billion dollar budget with your trio of carrots mimicking your votes for whatever predators you are feeding them. And it seems like they need to move it happen once. You and your three parents need to resign now. I would think they would have enough self-respect to be embarrassed. Maybe they do, because they marched on out here already. You would think at least they'd have enough of a sense of self-preservation to not tie their raps on the Sharon sinking Titanic.